All right, we'll call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Brown.
Here.
Calhoun.
Here.
Fournier. Kraut.
Here.
McGarretti. Here. Rick.
Here.
Yor.
Here.
Move to excuse Commissioner Fournier.
Support.
We have any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Brown.
Present. Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Calhoun.
Yes.
Fournier. Kraut.
Yes.
McGarretti.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Yor.
Yes.
Forgive me, I probably, I'm sorry, Commissioner Brown, since this is your first formal, formal meeting. So it is customary that when we have a Commissioner that's absent, we then usually, somebody makes a motion to excuse them. And especially when we know the reason and everything else, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right? And, and everyone does have the right to say no. So, all right, we will go ahead and move on to announcements, acknowledgements, communications, and reports. Do we have, I don't believe so, but, we will go ahead and we have a presentation of a Citizen Hero Award honoring Kiera CRC. And I'm gonna, do you want to read the?
I will not.
All right, okay. All right, so we sent a, we sent a letter to Kiera and I think this kind of will explain what happened, so. The Mount Clemens City Commission would like to formally recognize you for the assistance you recently provided to a resident who fell victim to a Bitcoin scam. Your actions were deeply appreciated by his family as well as the residents of the city of Mount Clemens. And so we want to, in recognition of her quick and heroic intervention efforts last September during which she assisted Fred Seewald and prevented him from becoming a victim of an online Bitcoin scam. And so we want to thank her for being a Citizen Hero. And unfortunately, she's not here at the moment, which if she does come in a little bit later, we'll, we'll make sure that she gets this recognition. Fred and his family are here and I know that it was very important to him, to them and to him to recognize Kiera because she went above and beyond what a citizen, you know, is obligated to do. And so it's, it's nice to see that in our community, community spirit and taking care of one another is alive and well, so. I don't know, should we, do you want to do, well, we'll wait to see if she comes in, in a little bit? Would you guys want to do a picture with, well, we'll probably, we should probably wait? Yeah, okay. All right, thank you. Does anybody else have any other announcements, acknowledgements, communications, or reports? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to adoption of the agenda.
Move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Support.
Okay, questions or comments about the agenda as presented? Okay, seeing none, call the roll, please.
Brown.
Yes.
Calhoun.
Yes.
Kraut.
Yes.
McGarretti.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Yor.
Yes.
All right, this is the portion of the meeting where we allow the public to address the commission. We, all that we ask is you come to the microphone, give us your first name, I'm sorry, your full name, your residential address, and you abide by our three-minute rule. If you would like to address the commission, come on up.
Norm Louvre, 40666, Flint Township. Just a couple of shout-outs, I'm not feeling too well, so I'm gonna hold on here also. One, once again, I'd like to thank the city clerk for all her assistance, that's number one. Number two, the two honorable city commissioners that was courteous enough to allow me to have a presentation with them, what I call a listening and learning session right here at City Hall, neither one which is here. And thirdly, I have to make this short, what I have to say is in, I gave to the city clerk, you can review it later, I would appreciate if you would review it. So my last shout-out is this. And this is from a candidate, from Candidate Connection. I'm just gonna read an excerpt and I really appreciate this. Local government now more than ever must find ways to meet the needs of its people, particularly its most vulnerable populations, the elderly, children, and people with special needs and disabilities. And I thank you very much for that. And I conclude by saying, Happy Thanksgiving to one and all, and God bless, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else would like to address the commission at this time?
Yep, thank you. Summer Perry Shaffey, 115 South Main Street, Mount Clemens, 48043. Yes, I, I have a note to that roll, it's best.
If you want to hand it to me, I'll, we'll distribute it, thank you.
It's enough for everybody.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else who would like to address the commission at this time? All right, seeing none, we will move on to administrative responses to issues or questions raised during previous meetings, and I'll hand that to you, Mr. Shipman.
She's slow, there she goes. At the November 3rd, 2025 commission meeting, during Commissioner's comments, the following question was asked. What is the process for a street name change and what are the fees involved? So the answer is on June 6th, 2023, the city commission adopted the city of Mount Clemens Park Recreational Facility City-Owned Building and Street Naming Policy. Section 2I of the policy states, all costs including staff time, labor and materials associated with the installation of plaques, monuments, and/or placement of signs resulting from this policy will be borne by the individual, group, or organization sponsoring the request. The city bases the charge for the signs off the MDOT schedule for sign repair and replacement. We do not include the hourly rate, just the material rate. A street name sign per MDOT is $49.50 plus some mounting brackets at our cost of $23.77, which equals $146.54 for the two signs. Additional signs would be additional cost. If the signs are requested to be installed after normal business hours, overtime costs for personnel would apply. On June 19th, 2023, city commission adopted a resolution establishing a fee for the city of Mount Clemens Park Recreational Facility City-Owned Building and Street Naming Application. The last paragraph states, now therefore, it is hereby resolved that the fee for an application made pursuant to the city of Mount Clemens Park Recreation Facility City-Owned Building and Street Naming Policy shall be set at $300 to cover the cost of the public hearing notification requirements and administrative processing. Thank you.
All right, does anybody else have any, or does anybody have any questions or comments for Mr. Shipman on that one? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to the approval of minutes.
Move to approve the minutes as presented.
Support.
Questions or comments about the presented minutes? Call the roll, please.
Calhoun.
Yes.
Kraut.
Yes.
McGarretti.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Yor.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Okay, moving to general business, 9A, approved placement of special assessments for delinquent utility and general billings on the tax roll. Go ahead, sorry.
Sorry. Move to approve special assessment rolls 2505 and 2506 for delinquent billing and placement on the city winter tax rolls for 2025.
Support.
Okay, Mr. Shipman.
Each year it is necessary to place delinquent bills on special assessment rolls for collection. Attached for your review are delinquent utility bills and delinquent general bills, broken down as follows. Special assessment roll 25-05 for delinquent utility bills, any amount of $16,652.39, and special assessment roll 25-06 for delinquent general bills in the amount of $114,665.83. Delinquent general bill types include the following, delinquent sidewalk in the amount of $5,059.30, delinquent weed cutting in the amount of $7,038.94, delinquent sanitation in the amount of $5,023, delinquent vacant registrations in the amount of $78,000, and delinquent rental registrations in the amount of $8,475, and delinquent enforcements in the amount of $15,240. Note that a 15% transfer fee will apply to all delinquent billings except for sidewalk invoices.
Okay, who has questions or comments about the, Mr. Shipman, Rick, you look like you're pondering.
Do, um, once something goes to taxes, is Macomb Community Action, through the chairs, apologize. I'd like to ask if, if once something goes to taxes, can Macomb Community Action help with it anymore? Or do they need to make sure to get any help they need before it rolls onto the tax rolls?
Well, I guess, so when we put it on taxes, if it's winter taxes, then it, you know, goes to the county relatively quickly. Your summer delinquents would, you know, have that roughly six-month period. So, once they go to the county, then MCA would deal directly with the county on whatever it was owed, not with the city.
Okay.
And it's always recommended that you first apply through the state, through Department of Health and Human Services for that.
Thank you.
When it says delinquent sanitation, everyone is assessed a sanitation fee on their taxes.
Correct.
So delinquent sanitation is if somebody has like an additional pickup or something, or?
That's if somebody, Chuck can correct me if I'm wrong, but if people put their garbage out early, then they will get posted to remove it. And if they don't, we remove it and we bill them.
Is it also, I keep seeing, like, if somebody is evicted and they create a mess on the front yard?
It happens.
Sometimes, okay, 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 I'm just wondering.
And if that happens, you just go online to the report with that address, correct?
You can, yeah, call the city manager's office, report it on that, Report a Problem app.
Do they see it on the Saturdays and Sundays, or it's just Monday through Friday?
It'll just be Monday through Friday. I mean, I'll probably see it, but there won't be anybody to really do anything about it till Monday.
Okay.
Unless it was like an emergency kind of situation, if you saw something like, I don't know, some kind of crazy spill or something, then I think 911 is always the best bet. Anybody else? Questions or comments? Oh, come on in, yeah, come on in. Well, if you just have a seat, we'll get right to you, okay? Yeah. Is there anyone else who has any questions about this one? All right, call the roll, please.
Kraut.
Yes.
McGarretti.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Yor.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Calhoun.
Yes.
Excellent, well, I think we're gonna go back up to 4A here and present our Citizen Hero Award again. I'm glad that, so Kiera, can you bring me up to the, yeah, meet me there?
Yes.
Okay, oops. All right, so Kiera, I did mention earlier in the meeting that, Kiera, your act of, I wouldn't, heroics, but just for sure kindness to fellow members of your community, we wanted to make sure we're acknowledged by the city because you didn't have to do what you did and, and a lot of people might have just turned a blind eye to that. And so, thank you from, on behalf of all of the commissioners, but, so the city of Mount Clemens offers a Citizen Hero Award and this certificate is awarded to Kiera CRC in recognition of her quick and heroic intervention efforts last September during which she assisted Fred Seewald and prevented him from becoming a victim of an online Bitcoin scam. Thank you for being a Citizen Hero. Thank you very much.
I'll say something about it.
Thank you.
I mean, it was great, and I know it's, she has been skiing.
Yes.
Oh, you did?
Thank you.
Well, and Plasek, they were so, so appreciative, so thank you.
Thank you guys, thank you.
You too.
I'm glad we got to come back to that because Fred's daughter-in-law actually also mentioned that a, that $259 million annually is, in just Bitcoin scams, is lost in every year nationally. So, just so that may bring some awareness to such a terrible thing that's taking advantage of people, yeah.
Were we considering an ordinance in the future on withdrawal from the Bitcoin ATMs?
I think that's something we can look into, but, yeah, yeah, excellent. I'm sure that we can, maybe MML can provide some guidance. It seems like if it's such a national program or a national problem, you know, we can. Did they? Okay.
Because they have a ton.
Okay, awesome. They have a ton of them?
Yeah, strangely.
Okay, interesting.
Maybe St. Clair Shores.
Okay, well, we'll look along the coast. All right, well, let's move on to 9B, election of mayor pro tem. And, can entertain, well, we really don't have a motion, so I can hand it over to you, Mr. Shipman.
Sure, we'll give them some background.
Yep.
Charter section 10.121 mandates that an organizational meeting shall be held on the Monday following each regular city commission election. The purpose of the meeting is to elect a mayor pro tem and to review the rules and procedures for the commission. The election process for the mayor pro tem is a paper ballot with the votes openly recorded in the minutes. An organizational meeting was held on Monday, November 10th, 2025. At the meeting, no candidate for mayor pro tem was able to secure the four votes necessary to be elected to the position. The commission tabled the agenda item until November 17th meeting. Here we are.
All right, and so, you know, today we were gonna, we'll take a vote again for mayor pro tem, and I believe I hand it over to clerk. I know that Commissioner Calhoun had requested to say a few things first, so we will, I can go ahead and do that.
Okay, well, I wanted to be the first to speak out in support of Commissioner Fournier to continue serving as mayor pro tem. I think one of the reasons why we've been able to work so well on this commission has been our diversity of experience, thought, and background. We've been able to leverage that and turn that into action with information from our city leaders. We've been able to make great decisions based off of that. In some cases, the best decision that we can, given the circumstances. I think that as, as a practice, we should, and as a democracy, we shouldn't let tradition rule, but we should allow the experience, ideas, and vision, as well as the leadership of our members, to find our support for them. And that's why I'm proud to be supporting Commissioner Fournier on her merits. She's earned every vote that she'll receive, and I think that that's a testament to her character and to the power of our democratic process and action.
Thank you. All right, all right, so we will go ahead and have everyone do their ballots and then pass them inward to the clerk. And if anyone else has any words?
Would you like to just confirm, is this the ballot for nomination or the ballot for voting for mayor pro tem?
I will, I will ask the commissioner. The commissioner, I will, sorry, the clerk, so voting, you said?
I would say, yes, because we were going with the candidates from last time, a few parts were all in agreement. Okay, there's a continuation of that, okay, yep.
Yes.
Just making sure I understood that.
I figured since everybody's name is on the sheet too, you can, so it is.
We are not nominating, we are voting. Thank you.
Unless, I don't know, somebody else wants to.
Well, all the names are on there, so please.
Yeah, per the, per the ordinance, you can still, even if they weren't nominated, you can still vote for them, which begs the question why there's a nomination rally.
Yeah, exactly.
I don't think we've done a nomination before. We just, I think people just go for it, so.
It's Roberts rules.
Since you can nominate yours, so you can nominate yourself too.
Yes, exactly, okay, so I'm gonna read through these, so I have Mayor Kraut voted for Commissioner Fournier. Commissioner Rick voted for Commissioner Fournier.
Yeah, that's right, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Calhoun voted for Commissioner Fournier. Commissioner Brown voted for Commissioner Fournier. Commissioner Yor voted for Commissioner Fournier. And Commissioner McGarretti voted for Commissioner Fournier, so we have a winner.
All right, well, we will inform Commissioner Fournier to that she is now our commissioner and mayor pro tem. So thank you all for participating, and we will move to the consent agenda, which nothing is listed at this time, so we'll go ahead and move to city manager's report, Mr. Shipman.
Mr. Tingley and Ms. Weiss represented the city and DDA at a real estate forum on November 6th, hosted by Macomb County Planning and Economic Development. They were able to share many of the private and public projects that are ongoing throughout the city and make several introductions to real estate and site development professionals. Reminder, city offices will be closed on Thursday, November 27th and Friday, November 28th for the Thanksgiving holiday. Thursday's refuse pickup will be delayed until Friday, and Friday's refuse pickup will be delayed until Saturday. The curbside compost pickup season is scheduled to end on Friday, December 5th, 2025. Over in Recreation, we have the Second Annual Daddy Daughter Dance, December 6th, at the Carnes Community Center. This year's theme is "I Love You to the Moon and Back." Please sign up today. And we have the Senior Meadowbrook Bus Trip, Wednesday, December 3rd. Seniors join us for an amazing holiday walk through Meadowbrook. There is still room to sign up today. For more information, check out our new monthly newsletter on Facebook or visit our registration portal. Find the link on our Facebook page or on the city website under the Recreation tab. The Mount Clemens City Clerk's office would like to thank all the election workers who worked on November 4th city election. Because of you, Mount Clemens voters had three options to cast their ballot. Early voting, absentee voting, and voting at the precinct, which resulted in a voter turnout of 21.25%. Big thank you to Greater Morning Star Church for allowing the city to permanently relocate Precinct 1 to their building and to our own Dave Hamilton for setting up and disassembling all the precincts. The city is once again accepting nominations for the local treasure award. The local treasure award is a chance to recognize residents and businesses that have made a positive impact on the city. The nomination form can be found at mountclemens.gov and must be returned by December 22nd to the city manager's office. Any residents may submit nominations and they must be made in writing using the forms. Our community events, we have the Downtown Christmas Open House, Christmas Tree Lighting and Visit with Santa and Mrs. Claus, Friday, November 21st, 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM, Cherry Street Mall area in downtown Mount Clemens. We have the 50th Annual Mount Clemens Santa Parade, Friday, November 22nd, starts at 10:00 AM down Main Street. For more information, you can go to mountclemensantaparade.com. We have small business.
Saturday. You said Friday, I think it's Saturday. Just, I just wanted to just.
Wait, the tree lighting are we talking about, or the Santa, the Santa parade?
Parade.
I would say Friday, oops, yep, Saturday, thank you, good catch.
Good catch.
No worries.
Possibly a preview on Friday, no, no.
Commissioner Rick, this file officer.
Yeah.
Disappointed, I didn't know, I didn't catch it.
You didn't catch it?
So, we have Small Business Saturday, Saturday, November 29th, in downtown Mount Clemens. And we have the Downtown Christmas Light Parade, Saturday, December 13th, at 7:00 PM. It's in downtown Mount Clemens. For more information on any of our events, you can call 586-469-4168.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Shipman about his city managers, city managers' report? Okay, hearing none, we will move on to public participation. This is the second opportunity that we welcome the public to address the commission. Again, we ask you to come to the microphone, give us your full name, your residential address, and you abide by our two-minute rule. If you would like to address the commission at this time, come on up. Okay. Oh, go ahead, you have to turn the microphone around, sorry. There you go.
Summer Perry Shaffey. 115 South Main Street, Mount Clemens, Michigan, 48043.
It's okay, thank you.
Well, other states are starting another thing, they're starting a parking lot with addresses in. And people who are living in the cars that they can't find places and they just got their cars, there, there can be a parking lot that they pay like $2.50 or $3.50 a month. And, and then there'd be a water place to take a shower in the bathroom, that's another idea. And that would help more tax money to come in, a lot more.
Thank you for the idea, Summer, we appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Take care. Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission at this time? All right, seeing none, then we will move on to Commissioner comments, and we'll start with Commissioner Yor.
Thank you. I want to congratulate Kiera CRC also for being recognized with the Hero Award. We really applaud those people who see something, say something. So, thank you for putting that together and giving us a chance to recognize her. I don't, we don't meet again this month, so wishing everyone a happy holiday and there are lots of great activities happening in the city, gearing up for some big events, including the Santa Parade on Saturday, November 22nd. So looking forward to that, and that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McGarretti.
I am going to leave downstairs on the rack where the city gives resources. This is the most updated pantry list for Macomb County. It is fully updated with a lot more detail as far as, as far as times and days for pickup, as well as new pantries that are available. So this will be downstairs across from the Water Department desk. Mr. Lupo, thank you so much for bringing that to our attention. What stated in the letter that you sent to us is very much appreciative. And we apologize for the time delay on it, wasn't, nothing on purpose, but thank you for bringing that to our attention. Hope you feel better. And the last thing we wanted to, the last thing I want to share is, Macomb Community Actions is doing the point in time count. That is where, the count is the annual count of those who are experiencing homelessness in Macomb County. This event helps us better understand our local homeless population and direct resources effectively to those who need them most. Volunteers can choose from two shifts, Wednesday, January twenty-eighth, from nine o'clock at night to midnight, or Thursday, January twenty-ninth, early morning, which is from two to five A.M. How you can help? Glad you asked. So, you can volunteer in teams. Volunteers canvass in a signed area of the county to count and survey unsheltered individuals who are experiencing homelessness. Gift cards are needed. That's the second way you can help. Fast food gift cards in low denominations like five or ten dollars are needed for distributing the point and time count. We've already began making the bags that we take. We don't just go out and count. We give immediate resources at that time. Some are unaware of how they can be housed. We have a lot of veterans who are sleeping in cars, under bridges, and what have you, and they can get, um, um, assistance as well, um, through Macomb Community Action, but we need help doing this. And so, if you are interested, you can come over to Macomb Community Action Center, or you can see me, and I will pass your information, or you contact the coordinator. Her name is Kristen, and she can be reached at five eight six eight one seven two zero four nine. So, you can go out and help count, or you can donate gift cards, um, or just call her and see what you can do to help with our unhoused population, and that's it.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Commissioner Brown.
Um, earlier tonight, there was a mention of the precinct change, uh, in Precinct One, uh, for the, uh, last election that we just had, and I just wanted to say that, um, I really think there was, um, a need, or I don't want to call it a snafu, but there was a need for us to make that a little clearer to voters on Election Day. And moving forward, I think we're gonna have to work on that, because I received a letter about the change well in advance, and a lot of people did. But a lot of people may have overlooked their letters, because they showed up at the old polling place, and they were thoroughly confused, because it's dark over there, there's no real street light, and there was no signage. And I was told that night by someone who was, uh, working one of the, well, who was working the polling place at the new church, that some cities have sandwich board signs, just like the ones that identify the precincts, that identify that a precinct has changed. And we may want to consider that investment, because there was a lot of confusion, and actually, some of the workers at, um, the new polling place of Morning Star Church had to construct some makeshift signs and take them over to the other polling place and stick them up, but I drove by there later, and they weren't very visible, so that, it's just something to think about moving forward. Yeah, I do have another comment, if that's okay.
Of course.
Um, I did vote tonight, um, to, uh, I voted, uh, yes, to approve the placement of special assessments for delinquent utility bills on the tax roll. However, I want to just say that I think we have to be very mindful that a lot of people don't know that there are, um, that there is some form of remediation for them with these, uh, utility bills. They're just not aware of, you know, where they should reach out to and what's available to them in terms of being put on some kind of a payment plan, or something that, you know, kind of alleviates some of their, uh, financial stress. So, I think we just have to think of ways, moving forward as a city and as a city commission, where we could be more, um, just informative, because I know that I've talked to a lot of people who said I didn't know anything at all was available to me. Okay?
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Commissioner Calhoun.
All right. Uh, well, first, I want to congratulate our new and returning members to the city commission. Uh, I'm excited that you'll, you'll be here with us for longer or for the first time. Um, I'm looking forward to learning more from every person here on this board, and, uh, for looking at new solutions to solve some of the problems that we're faced. And of course, I'm excited that we all get to be a voice for our neighbors, so welcome back, welcome, and I'm looking forward to it. Um, I had a great time co-hosting Mayor Krop's Coffee Talk, uh, last week with Commissioner Fournier. We got some good feedback on, um, a lot of the things that we're working on. We talked a lot about the dumpster, situation that we had a work session on that was interesting. And then, uh, we also went on a little field trip to Priority Waste, um, last Wednesday.
Not with the coffee talk.
Not, not with the coffee talk, uh, but that came up, too. There was a lot of trash talk, but in a positive sense. And so, I encourage everyone to take advantage of opportunities, um, to engage with, uh, leadership in the community, to share your ideas and your concerns. That's one of, these coffee talks are a great way to do that, but there are other public events that, uh, our state representatives, state senators, our members of Congress put on. Uh, so I encourage everyone to participate in those and make your voice heard, and often in a casual setting. Um, I also want to thank the Macomb County Sheriff's Enforcement Team for taking down an illegal drug operation in our community, keeping over a thousand fentanyl pills, um, and other substances from being distributed in our area. Uh, so huge thanks to them. I also, lastly, want to take a minute to express my support for Mount Clemens firefighters while they're, uh, seeking a fair contract from the city. Since May, Local Eight Thirty-eight has been bargaining with the city, and I look forward to a contract that includes a fair raise and the elimination of the two-tier system. Uh, I feel it's important for us to eliminate the two-tier system, because it puts our newest four firefighters in a second class. Uh, on the same subject, I look forward to the Michigan House of Representatives taking up House Bill Fifty-two ninety, which our state representative Denise Menzer supports, which will make minimum firefighter staffing levels a mandatory subject for collective bargaining. Uh, I hope that our mediation is successful, and that we can resolve this contract for our dedicated firefighters. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Rick.
Thank you. Uh, first, congratulations to Kira, and thank you for helping protect one of our residents, uh, online scams or, and, and Bitcoin scams. It's, it's a, it's a rampant issue. Uh, we hear about it a lot over in the Office of Senior Services, and I am glad to see a resident step in and derail at least one scam. I'd like to thank everyone who came out for the Veterans Day Ceremony over at Clinton Grove. I'd especially like to thank my fellow veterans that put on that, uh, event every year, year on, year out. Their work is appreciated, and, uh, I hope we continue to do the same, especially since our VFW post has the lead for the next one, so please continue to support, because we need the help. Thank you. I'd like to thank the Fire Department for their quick response to the suspicious foam situation on the water, which is thankfully fine. There's no, it, everything's okay, but it looked really odd, and I'm glad they were able to get there and respond and get that sorted out. I did want to mention, uh, despite the amount of different ways the city has increased how it's reaching out and communicating with people, I still periodically hear from folks that they didn't get the information, or they haven't found the information, and so perhaps an outreach ad hoc committee is something we can consider at some point. Uh, also, those ad hoc committees are, may serve as a nice feeder for our regular committees, and then from there, to increase voter turnout, uh, because people that are engaged through ad hoc committees and sitting committees are more likely to turn out to vote. Our turnout of twenty-one percent and change was well above the county average and above our historical numbers for these off-year elections, but still not where it should be, so I hope we can continue to build on different ways to get citizens more engaged and get the voter turnout to be more consistent. Now onto something a little more exciting, Santa Parade, uh, November twenty-second, kicks off at ten. There's public parking available downtown. Uh, it is too late to sign up to march in the parade, but we are still looking for volunteers. If you're able to, go to mountclemens.santaparade.com. Or if you're looking for another way to volunteer, there are openings on several of our boards, committees, and commissions. You can find more information at mountclemens.gov/boards, or call the city at five eight six four six nine six eight zero zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, so I, uh, too, want to thank Kira. Um, I, I'm glad that we were able to recognize her efforts and, um, her thoughtfulness, uh, in, in the community, and, and that was a great way to start, start the meeting. Um, I want to welcome, uh, Commissioner, Commissioner Brown, and also, um, congratulate, uh, Commissioner Rick and Commissioner Fournier on their wins, and, um, appreciate the vote of confidence, um, in my win. Um, I also want to remind everyone that we are, um, collecting food again. I'm gonna pull that up. It's, um, we are still collecting food, uh, for this week, um, and if you are interested, we're, we're doing that to help alleviate some of the, um, some of the, with all the SNAP benefits, and so we've, we are this week, um, collecting for the weekly meal kit that is the creamy chicken and dumplings kit. And it is, um, we have the, all of the items that you would need to include in the kit. On our Facebook page, you can also find it on our city website, and you can get, get, you can also bring those to either the Karnes Community Center, the Fire Department, or City Hall, and all of the information on the times is available, again, on our social media and our, um, city website. Um, you can also, um, pick up food if you are in need of it, um, Tuesday or Thursday from ten to one, or from six to nine. So, Tuesdays and Thursdays at the Karnes Community Center from ten A.M. to one, or six to nine. And so, we encourage anyone who is experiencing food insecurity, um, to come and receive meal kits that are ready to cook for your family and, um, and I think look pretty good, too. So, thank you to the community that has donated. I'd also like to thank the city staff who has volunteered their time, um, in the evenings, um, to put those kits together and then, um, take on the extra, um, job of distributing. So, they did that without question when the idea was brought to, to the city, so I appreciate all of their efforts. Um, I want to mention, um, that in addition to the letter that was sent for Precinct One, we also, every voter was given a new voter registration card, um, that had the new permanent, um, Precinct One listed on it with the address. They were also, it was in the Clementines, um, for two additions, Kathy? Two additions. It was listed in there, um, in a pretty significant, it was also listed in the paper. Um, it was also listed, uh, several times on our social media. Um, and so, I just want to make sure that it, it was a very significant effort. I also know that the night before, not handwritten signs, but signs from the city were put on the doors that were used, that were used, and actually, pictures were taken, in case there were any questions. Pictures were taken with date and timestamps that we can happily show anyone who needs to see them. But those were also put up. The sandwich board idea is a good idea, because that is something that is recognizable that, um, for precincts, so I'm sure that Kathy, who's always wanting to improve our elections and improve the security and improve things, so I know she'll take that to heart and to look into that. So, I also want to, um, thank Kathy and all of the, uh, Kathy, Nancy, and all of the election workers who, it's a long, long day, and so I want to thank them, um, and for all of their, all of their work and and the work for the early voting, because I know that was kind of long and boring. So, so thank you for all of that. Um, I am looking forward to seeing everyone. It is a big weekend in Mount Clemens this weekend, so if you can get out there on Friday, um, the tree lighting is fairly early, since it gets dark early. We're gonna have a beautiful tree this year. Um, it's actually already, it was, it arrived today. Um, and so, we're gonna have a beautiful tree, we're gonna have, um, a very festive-looking downtown. And, um, also, I read today on, uh, social media that, please remember that when you are shopping for whatever holiday season you may celebrate, um, that every dollar that you spend locally impacts local families and local businesses directly. And so, we really encourage everyone to use all of our restaurants for your events, all of our event spaces for your events, and again, all of our retail spaces, which we do have a lot of retail shops downtown. Um, and so, we encourage everyone to use those. I know a lot of, um, my family is going to be receiving a lot of Mount Clemens things that they didn't even know they wanted. So, thank you to everybody who already, um, partake, partakes in our downtown, but, uh, we need it more than ever, right, to, to support our community, and, um, just like Kira, we want to make sure that we're reaching out and supporting everyone, so. Thank you, um, everyone, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Support.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, have a great night, everybody. Thank you.